I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll be spending the minutes from the last meeting until our regular meeting.
That's a good thing.
Damn!
Okay, what we're having this special meeting for is the proposed settlement on the Love and Hope Sanctuary. And they have, I guess, I think it's not the best thing in the world, but it's, at least it's worthy of getting done with. I think we ought to have a resolution to pass it, to approve the proposed settlement, so it gets, you know, get it done with. So I entertain a motion to that, please?
It's, to make sure this is accurate, it's 145,000 for the next two years, correct? And then after that, it goes back to, just like everyone else. I'll make a motion to that proposal.
Do we have a second? Seconded, so discussion?
So those percentages on there, they're just, it says 90.5% of...
Well, that's what our equalization rate is at the county.
Equalization, okay.
Yep, that's what that is, so now the, we put that times an assessed value and come up with it. The good part is they dropped the year off, and so it's only locked in for basically 17 months because, end of the next, it'll be May, I guess, of 2022. So I mean, that's when, that's when it's open now.
End of the best of our knowledge, still, it's...
Well, it'll be actually, it's through 2020 and '21.
Okay.
So they can, you know, I think in January of 2022 is when it can be redone if necessary. So we have a motion, we have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Carry. The other, I got a letter from Kaufman and Gerhardt. It's a letter to be signed by, I believe myself, it's a 2020 retainer agreement, which I don't think we've had this before. But it's just to retain us as our legal representation. Here's the letter, you guys can look over, I really didn't read it, I'm a bad man at that. I'll let you file one of these at the town, okay?
Yep.
And I got a letter from Gary Arn about the audit for the justice, for the court. And it's supposed to be done this month, maybe years, it's supposed to, you know, it's in, it sounds like to be done. So I would like to appoint Dwight, if you would. I talked to Jan this, tonight, and she hadn't said, she said she would meet with us before the end of the year. But she wasn't going to specify a date yet, but she said we could get it done before the end of the year. And I would also entertain a resolution that if the audit is found to be good, that Sonya could send a letter to the state verifying, you know, that the audit was done in 2019. Because Jan, and I think everybody knows, Jan, our clerk of the court, is retiring. So her replacement is Mrs. Beers from Walton. This is Gary Fields, she works for the, does the Walton Village and Town just courts right now. So Gary feels very good that, you know, just, there wouldn't be a glitch in our bookkeeping, you know, it'd be a good, good changeover. So he, he seemed very happy, and so I thought, well, if he's satisfied, we could probably live with it. So that's what's happened there, so. And I think that if Andy's going to retire, it'd be nice to have the books looked at at the end of her term, and that way we start with clean, you know? So that's what, I would, I guess, entertain a motion to, you know, when Dwight and whoever wants to go with him, to check the, the records. If we find them to be okay, I'd entertain a motion to let Sonya send the state a letter to that effect that the resolution was made, that the records were approved. Thank you, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Is that all right, Dwight? All in favor? Carry, that was good, too. I also got a letter, a short meeting, it's going to be short, but Greg, Greg Lovins, whatever, New York's Safety Track. It's a, oh, it's a car motorcycle dirt track in Davenport. And been making headlines between Harper's Field and Davenport.
They got a pretty good sized billboard right off 23.
Oh, they do.
See it?
Okay, okay, well, it's a letterhead, what they want, this letter is in response to the request, request by New York State Safety Track for a letter of support in response to your efforts to obtain a certified, a certificate of need to operate in Delaware County at the New York Safety, Safety Track. And what it is, he wants to, I guess, have an ambulance service at the track site. We understand that you, that you propose to provide...
That the county provides?
No, not the county, this is his own...
His own thing.
"We understand that you propose to provide EMS and ambulance transportation service at your track in an event of medical emergencies. We support your application and your interest in providing prompt emergency medical services to persons at your facility. We further understand that the public needs, need exits for the service to intend... We further understand that a public need for, need exists for the service you intend to provide pursuant, pursuant to the definition of public need in your letter of solicitation. In our organizational record, that we support the application of New York Safety Track for a specific need at the New York Safety Track."
I don't get it.
Yeah, what does that have to do with all?
Well, we're adjoining town, I guess is the only thing, and they want local support, so maybe they're going to get grants or something for it, I really don't know.
Are they looking to leverage somebody?
Yeah, yeah, what do they, does that mean that we agreed to...
We agreed to support it financially?
The town, the town's not really eager to support it. So do I...
There's some of these fire departments that are trying to push and charge for their ambulance, right?
Well, they can't legally in the state, they'd like to, and that's a fraud.
They're trying to get that changed.
They'd like, they would like to.
They make a lot of money doing that.
Oh, Onianna's also refusing some service, you know, to go on some of these calls. Stanford has got a terrible situation up there, they're, you know, no EMS up there. By the time you call, what's it called, AMR or whatever the hell it is, you know, and it can, they said they were called up... One time this fall, if I remember, there was 18 calls went out before somebody responded to the call for the ambulance.
It's tough, though, for these volunteer, I mean, what the state's decided to do for these, you know, it's hard for, it's volunteer service for people to hold a job, then come and meet the recommendations that they have to in order to...
I've heard what, you know, it's 40 hours for a volunteer fire department, fireman. EMS can be anywhere from 40 to 160 hours a year, and it may be over a three-year plan, I'm not sure, I can't believe it could be half a year.
I always thought it was 120 hours a year.
A year, I know, and I, I've said it, you know, at the county, you know, these, we've got these new emergency service towers. Well, I, I did make the remark at the board meeting that, you know, I understand our volunteers, fire departments and emergency squad really do need these. But does, at that time it was EMS, do they have to pay for the service? No, they get it for free. And then they, they can charge these outrageous rates to people, too.
This was addressed to you, or was it sent to the state, or what?
Hi, James.
Man, almost like they want, this is, if they get support and they get a grant.
Yes, it came to me.
Senator Franklin, but this guy is...
He's a private...
...return as a historian, or? Yeah.
Well, it's, it's been an issue with, I know Davenport and Harper's Field are having, a lot, they've had a lot of issues with this guy. And we're not sure if that's...
But that's not bizarre. I mean, it's, sounds offensive, but it really doesn't impact us in any way, shape or form.
Well, if, let's say if Davenport doesn't respond to it, Onianna doesn't respond to it, will Franklin get called out on it?
Well, is that what they're saying? If we sign it, we have to respond?
No, we're not, he's going to put his own ambulance service there, is what I understand.
Yeah, but he's...
That's what I don't understand, what he's...
That's what I don't understand, why do they, they need our support?
I mean, we're 40 miles away.
Right, but I mean, as I, as I said, you know, it was an hour, hour and a half, they waited that one time, they were, you know, buzzed out or chimed out 18 times before they got coverage. I mean, and it's getting, I mean, even Franklin's very fortunate. Delhi, Hampden, and Walton, which have always had great units and stuff, are seriously considering hiring this ARM, or AMR, or whatever, whatever it is, to cover the three townships.
Well, who can volunteer and spend all that time a year just to be qualified to do it?
I, I don't disagree, I don't disagree.
And the thing of it is, is it's, like, we're fortunate, but there, there's different levels that you can be staffed at. And like, they get, they can respond and so on, but they're very limited to what they can have, but we're lucky also to have someone like Dale Downing in our community, because Dale is, you know...
Right, right, we're very fortunate to have Joe Fratner.
It's very difficult for what they're expecting out of these, out of these town, small townships on these volunteer units to...
But I'm just, I mean, that's the only thing I can think, is that, you know, he's looking to put his own EMS there, which is good, but I'm not su, and you're right, I'm not sure whether we respond to it and say yes, it's a good thing, he might get some money for it. Local support to get some grants or something.
Well, he's got to show a need for it.
Yeah, there's something with that certificate, I know.
Certificate of need, and so that...
And they just had to do something with their certificate of need, I don't, I didn't understand that one, but...
Yeah, right.
There was something, and it wasn't, it cost money, too, it wasn't cheap.
Right. But that's, that's a letter that I got in the mail, too, to respond to.
I mean, I think Stanford'd be scribbling a letter left and right to them, because they clearly have a need for it.
Yeah, but this is just for that site, they're going to have a...
Yeah, he's not going to do any other work.
Which is what I'm saying, why do we need, why does he even care what we want a part of?
Yeah.
Unless it's, yeah, I don't know, I don't know if this is what he said.
I mean, you would think just a town of Davenport would need to do this for him.
Or Harper's Field, or Field, or...
Harper's Field, yep.
Sounds like a liability corporation, so...
Hello, Jim. We passed a resolution to go forward, to, you know, accept the settlement?
Yeah, I'm just going through it, I didn't, I didn't know if you guys wanted anything.
Well, I, we discussed a little bit, we tried to go on executive session, but Tony wouldn't let us. No, you know, and, you know, it's pretty much...
He was proud of my mother.
Yes, I'm still number one, no, but that's, I mean, you know, as a board, I know, I talked to all of them, and they really, no, I didn't talk to you, did I? I left a message. But, you know, that, that was not as good as we'd like, but it's, they gave and we, you know, get it done. So, we passed a resolution to accept the offer, or accept the mediation, or how do you, how do you propose that?
Well, I just, I need to get back to money, so I just want to make sure.
145,000 for a two-year freeze.
For the two-year, okay.
So you need a resol, you want a resolution passed, so you got a copy of that, Jim, or?
No, it's, I mean, how...
You know, what was proposed, we accepted, how's that? I mean, we'd like to fight more, but it's just going to cost us more money.
All right. You don't want me for anything, do you?
Just to wish you had a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, yeah.
You just got to get home, yeah.
Good luck getting home, then, how's that? Don't go on South Side, they say you can't get through there.
It was swooning over this afternoon.
Thank you!
Traffic lights are backed up bad.
That's what worries it, now Jean went over there today, said, "Oh, what a zoo." So...
Engagement letter, looks fine.
Okay, yep, for the lawyers, for Kaufman and Gerhardt. Okay, well, and I will sign it, date it, and Sonya will take copies of it and then mail it back to them, please? See, who are they looking for this one? Have you read this?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, this is, the second page is, and I'm trying to figure out who's supposed to be this, why are they looking at signature from us? Because like, who of us is chief executive officer?
That's why I wonder if they sent us a loose sign, anything?
I wouldn't know that. And that makes it sound like we're committed to something.
Yeah, exactly.
Doesn't that, I mean, does that sound that way to you?
Seems so, and I don't know why they would send it otherwise. They could just put it in the newspaper and say, "Here we are," you know?
Exactly.
They're asking the wrong people, too.
That's what I, that's what I...
Call the fire department, and it's them.
Why, why would you want to any...
Maybe he's just saying, "No, we understand that you proposed to provide EMS and ambulance service at your track in the event of medical emergencies." Because it's too...
There's two of them laid up on the track.
Yeah, so... Yeah, so he's providing it.
So is there a department in New York State?
Wait, try, why you have the letter?
But this year...
That's the business.
Sure, it's a private business, LLC.
That's the, that's the guy in here, this Mr. Lavis.
He still needs a certificate of need.
He's not the owner of the track.
He is the owner of the track.
Of the track up there.
I don't know.
This Mr. Lavis.
What town is which, right down there?
Is that Jefferson?
I don't know.
On camera, if they want response from the town supervisor, they should leave a phone number.
It could be.
Because I don't have email.
Because it's right close to...
Or Facebook, or whatever.
It's right before you...
You'll watch it.
Yeah, it's flat, you know. Wayne and Dave.
Yeah, which, they're Harper's Field, yeah.
And the track of the...
Right, and Davenport has the one corner, I mean, comes right up near there.
I just, it doesn't mean, I don't think...
We can table it till...
Yeah, I'd table it.
Sounds good to me.
You know, we can respond to them and tell them, like, more clarification, I guess, but I don't...
Good, Sonya? Okay, okay.
Turn that over to your PR, HR.
Sonya's got a copy of this, so we're not concerned about our letter.
Just if you have any questions, feel free to contact me.
917.
Tell them to come to a Franklin Town Board meeting.
Yeah, and explain your position.
I have an email, too, I can email them if you need...
That's my, that's my suggestion to them.
917 is...
Come on up and tell us what they're talking about.
Exactly, yeah, make it text them. Don't be playing these mailing games and expecting us to commit to something.
Email them back that we are, our next official town board meeting is January 8th, at 6 o'clock.
And tell them what February is, too, I mean, here, you got an option, Sonya.
Tell them 7:30 in February, though. Right, Tony?
Put that in the morning.
Okay, thank you, and Dwight did visit with Delhi Telephone Company on Friday.
And I talked to her today, too.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, she answered some questions, and I just summarized what she said, and if, I guess, one of the things is if it, if things are going to change up at the Village Hall, Town Hall, then they want to do a site visit up there, and they want to do a different date than the 7th for installation, because they want to do two at the same time.
Oh, okay.
They're agreeing to provide service to both sites, so it's, it would be here and up there, or when that's done, here and up on the hill.
Okay.
Yeah, so it would be both, and everything's coming in on, on the one cable, on a fiber optic cable. And the only thing we would have to do is put the conduit down, and then they'll, they'll run the conduit, or they'll run the cable in the conduit.
The conduit hasn't been put down, then?
The conduit to here has been, is in place, as I understand, but the conduit would have to be run up to the new building. Up there, I don't think it would be going to it, it's close enough, I think they'd probably just run a, run a wire through it.
And it figures out somewhere's around half price, the phone service?
I broke it down a little bit, I mean, it's, it's hard to be exact, because it depends on how many lines you're going to want. But it runs about $30 a line for the phone. We have to get the phone ser, we have to use them for phone service if we're going to get this...
Right, right.
And again, it's about $30 a line, and there are two options, they can port all the numbers, I don't know how many lines we have total.
We got like four or five in the town.
It'd be three, maybe?
Well, Gary, has he got two, hasn't Gary got two?
Yeah, but one of Gary's could end up being on the internet. See, he's got a service that, the one line, I do believe is being utilized as, I do believe it's being utilized like as a computer direct line into the state, which that could become an internet line. So all they really need is the one line into the, because when I was there, there was just the one line for, to take phone calls. The second one, I believe, he took in, because they, basically the state wanted you to change completely into a computer system. And I do believe that's what his second line was for.
So whatever, whatever number of lines you come out to, phone lines that we use, it's about $30 a line, and there's two options after that. The, we can keep the numbers, then get ported over, but if you want to have a one number where the public calls in, so 829, 123, whatever it is, you call in, and then a voice would come on and say, "If you want the judge, press 1, the assessor, press 2, et cetera, et cetera." And then it'll, it'll roll over to that office, and you either speak to someone, or you can leave a message. If somebody knows what the direct line is, they can just call in and bypass that if they want to.
Oh, really?
So you can leave it like that, so the number will just, will stay there. There's a, have to have an extra line for that, so it's, I forgot what they called it, but bottom line is, it's a line line. You're going to, you'd call, you'd use the one line to call in, and then the numbers would distribute where your call wanted, you wanted it to go. Or you can call in directly.
But then what if you just wanted the one line coming in, then just divvy off, like most of them do?
You, you can do that, it may be that we have to deal with, was it Delhi?
That was an issue. Am I, am I right, Dwight? Like, that's kind of what we talked about a year ago, and they all got upset about it, they all wanted their own phone number, they didn't want...
I, I got, I think the solution to that was make the town phone number, the court's phone number, so they don't have to change a thing at the state.
You could do that, the only thing is you...
The numbers come off of that.
You have to deal with the Delhi Tel, what do they call it, the internet service, or some other component of Delaware, or Delhi Telephone, in order to get that, and you could do that, and she suggested that if, if you want to have any complex system in place, that that's, that's what you, you probably want to go. I don't think they would do that. They're not the people to speak to, to get that done, they would direct us to somebody else.
I think we could stay with every number, we're still going to be saving a fair amount of money.
It'll be about half, I think, well, you figure it out, it's, just say there's 10 lines, I don't know, so that's $300. And then there's, and let's see, 10 lines would be 300 bucks, and then, what else? What else is there, let's see?
That's it, because all the rest would be internet.
Yep.
And right now, we're $700.
Yeah, three to $400.
Cut the phone bill in half. Because the same service.
Yeah.
Frontier is frontier.
And the other, it's then no competitive problem again.
Yes.
Well, this is going to stay at this rate forever.
I mean, you think about it, they charge 10 cents more.
Two years, okay.
I think it's two years, they have to.
They're going to go on...
You go over to the other side of the mountain, you save 10 cents versus go to the side of the mountain, you know?
And on the back, there's a few other charges, there's a phone move charge, 111 bucks one time, an internet connection charge for the new building from the old, $25. And then there's a cable connection fee of, from new to...
Our first month bill will be the same as Frontier, but after that we'll save.
It'll still be less.
After that we'll save, how's that, with all the additional installation.
It'll still be less, it'll, it'll, that's the funny part, even with all the extra...
Well, I thank you very much, Dwight, for taking time with Mark and Jim. They all met, the three of them met with the Delhi telephone people.
The other thing, just quickly, I just want to get some info from you guys, Delhi Tel suggested that we purchase and install our own router. I'd mentioned to you, Jeff, that's about 200 or 300 bucks for a mesh type router. And we can either do that ourselves, or use Delhi Tel IT Division to install and support it, router. Would they put it in, she said, "Yeah, I think they probably would," and then they would support it or something, you know, with DAB or something like that.
Did you look at the cost of, like, a maintenance agreement on the router?
That would be through Delhi Tel, and they have nothing to do, Delhi Tel Internet Division, they don't have anything to do with that, so...
The phone doesn't deal, do anything with the internet?
That's, they, yeah, they have a, they have two divisions, they have their regular division.
So it'd be, I mean, I, myself, I mean, Jim's, you know, the service person we have right now for our computer system. And if this, you know, if this router could be put into there, let them maintain it and take care of it. You know, because someday Jim may not be here, and I'm not sure if, you know, Dwight, you're capable of it, but, you know, it's something that the town should look into, get a maintenance plan, so if something happens, you're here within hours, I'm hoping, to fix it.
I think, I would suggest that you strongly consider the, the mesh router, because there's, there's a lot of other, I mean, you, you know, you can use it for, make it through, doors are locked, turn the heat on, turn the lights on and off, cameras, the whole bit, so, you know, it's...
And that's directly through them, right?
Yeah, we get it through that.
No, it could be through us, or it could be through them.
I mean, if it's...
What's your suggestion? If it was me, I would, I mean, if something... If it was me, I would, I mean, if something breaks, you're just gonna put in a new system.
Right, but if it's.
So if they put it in.
They put it in.
They, they would.
We don't have to spend.
Right.
Two or three hundred dollars for a router.
Right, I, I think what we should do is tell them, look, we wanna have a router that does such and such, and if you think you're com, you're more comfortable with having them do it, which I guess makes sense, cause Jim or I aren't around or whatever, if somebody else doesn't wanna mess with it, they would just come and, come and do it, but I think we should say what kind of router we would, exactly.
Oh, I, I agree with that.
Because the router they wanna put in is just gonna be a basic, a basic router, and.
We, we want, we wanna have room for growth.
You're not wanna.
Options, options.
Right, so I would think that'd be a great thing to look into is, but, you know, the maintenance factor, you know, we might, I think.
Well, here's the question, like, if we picked the router, and they installed it, do you think that they would serve it with that?
Yeah, they would, they, they would take care of everything, they would, and, and that's the impression I got from, uh, from Joy.
That's.
I think that's the way to go, as long as we.
If we buy it through them.
As long as he selects what he wants.
Right, no, I agree, a hundred percent, let, let them install it and take care of it and maintain it.
You're responsible for it.
And that's. Fiber's small shit.
And that way too, I mean, if you, you know, if, you know, and, and there should be some concern when, when nobody's in that, what, how many days a week would, would, is someone gonna be up in that, in, in that new building? So you, you might wanna have the ability to, you know, kinda survey what's going on up there.
Right, right.
That's been.
Leave, leave the options open for expansion.
Exactly.
Options.
Options.
So, you know, you could do that without moving somebody up there, or, or maybe you still wanna have, I, I don't know, but, but the bottom line is, you, you know, you could do that with something like that, you could.
It's amazing what can be done, yes.
It's not perfect, but it's, but nothing is.
Well, I thank you very much Dwight for taking the time to meet with them, and I, you know, to give us some idea of what, what their options are, what they're giving us for this venture.
So, the, the, the bottom line, I guess, on it is, gee, I was gonna get back to her tomorrow, and let her know, should, I mean, is, is the, what was it, the thirteenth? I think.
The seventh.
The seventh or the, the thirteenth was for both places. Do you want them to come and put it in on the thirteenth, or both places, or you just wanna start here?
I would do both places, I mean, we're gonna be there for the seventh.
I guess we've gotta give Frontier a little notice of it, right?
I don't think we have to worry about Frontier, I thi, I think.
They're ready to pull out.
I, I think Frontier's involved with porting the numbers, so they're gonna get ahold of Frontier.
They're gonna take care of that.
Tell them, look, this is what we wanna do, this is our timeframe, and they're gonna, you know, we don't have to get on the phone for that now.
I guess I'd switch them both, get them both over, if, if they'll do it, go down the thirteenth and have it done.
That's what I would say.
Okay, well, I entertain a motion to that effect, go forward with this.
I mean, it's coming pretty fast, we've gotta.
It's February.
Yeah.
Well, I think change the phone lines all over and put the internet in, right, if you want. If, if you've got time to wait to work on it.
Yeah, I can call her tomorrow, and, and what I'd like to do is have her send a, a final agreement, a summary, cause there's always this little charge and that charge, and the first thing you know, it's double what.
Yeah, well, we have a meeting on the eighth, I believe, and I guess, you know, if you can get things finalized and stuff, we'll, you know, set it up, you know, temporarily for the thirteenth, so we can get all switched. Of February, we'll find out, you know, if you get some more information on it by the January meeting, we can go from there.
Did you say they wanted to come up there?
They do wanna come up there and do a site, so they know what they have to bring, wire, et cetera, et cetera. You know, to, to get it going up there. It's not gonna be as involved, I don't think, cause they're just gonna run from the, where, I don't know where they have the coil.
Sonia, you just have one computer line, right? Yeah, I thought, and Gary has one.
No, actually, mine runs off the court.
Gary probably liked that.
Oh, the wifi, yeah. Yep, I don't know about, um, Mark.
Yeah.
So that's the other thing we have to think about up there.
Now, mine is the court wifi that I can walk on.
You're gonna wanna have, is it, so it's wireless?
Yes.
It is wireless, okay. And the lines will be out for about one or two hours on the day they put it in, so, um, just a heads up on that. She said it probably wouldn't be more than a couple hours, but she doesn't do the installation, so she said.
You never know what you're gonna run into.
Exactly, so there may be.
I think it's something to go forward with, if Dwight's willing to.
At three hundred dollars, I mean, I think that's a pretty realistic estimation as to how many phone lines we have.
Right, I mean, if we can save, you know, right now we're paying seven, if we can save a hundred dollars a month.
On phone.
On phone alone, that's, uh, pretty significant. And hopefully have much better service and, well, it says, I don't know what this, internet's seventy-five by seventy-five.
That means, that's the up and down speed, so it's gonna be seventy-five, seventy-five megabits down and seventy-five megabits up, which is, you could be able, it's pretty darn good.
That zeros out.
There you go, up and down, gone, nothing.
Okay.
So that's the break we're getting for letting them put this over here with the free.
Actually, I think they do that for all municipal.
I did it at the trouble fire department and stuff too.
Yeah, and they'll do it at first.
Yeah.
And they did it for.
But we can feel good that we started it.
We addressed a complaint.
Yep.
So that's all.
I say that's a good thing, that's more forward.
Yep, sounds great, and Dwight, you'll get.
Yep, I'll call her tomorrow and tell her to plan on the thirteenth.
And find, and find out when they, Sonia's, your office would be available on Tuesday, Thursday.
Just let me know, I can come any time.
Cause they're gonna come in and, you know, I'm not gonna have any idea where people are gonna want stuff, so you just gotta have to be there, tell them, no, we wanna have this here and that there.
Or you'll show where the, the code enforcement officer is room.
That's the only office I can't get into, I gotta get into the courtroom too, so.
But it's wireless, so it, I don't think it'll make a difference up there, because.
Probably the router is in my office, that would seem strange, but.
They'll know, they, they'll.
That's their expertise, we're gonna go inside the building, they can decide.
They'll take care of it from there.
So we need two routers?
So that means we're gonna have to have, uh, two routers, yeah.
Up there, we don't need a big to-do router, we can take the most basic one, cause we're only gonna be there for short spell.
Yeah, but you can take it, take it up there, right? I mean, it's not like you're gonna.
You could probably use the one that's there, just for the time being.
For the time being, and then when we move.
But when we move up there, we need a router down here and a router up there, that's gonna run, for a decent router, it's probably gonna be around, it's a good three hundred dollars.
Oh my God, that's a month's, one savings.
We'll save that, whole building for then, so, for one month.
And we'd have more options, more ability.
We won't be under Frontier.
Hell, let's not beat this down.
Yeah.
Get her done, Dwight.
I know, we need motion, or just, Dwight, you'll, you'll bring it to our, your board meeting in January.
Yep, yep.
Sounds great, so is there anything else? I can't think of anything else to be brought before the board. Except that everybody have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. You too, Tony. And everybody in the crowd.
I make a motion to adjourn?
We'll give a second, all in favor?